Good morning, good morning, good morning. The time for convening has arrived. The Senate will come to order. At this time, I will ask all unauthorized personnel to exit the chamber. Chair recognizes Senator from the 28th for reading the Journal.
Good morning, Mr. President. I hope you're having a wonderful day today. And as you know, I typically like to introduce our pages for the day. And it's just been a sad week because we haven't had pages. But today, I am dubbing some honorary pages for the day. We have Senator Estevez's son, Jaden, with us today. Jaden, I want you to wave to everybody.
All right, all right.
And we have Senator Anna Vartarte's daughter with us, Kennedy. Kennedy, would you wave to everyone? Jaden and Kennedy, I've just asked that y'all don't tell my children you missed school today to be here because I don't want them getting any ideas, okay? Mr. President, the Journal has been read and found to be correct.
All right, all right, sounds good. And it's good to have young Jaden and Kennedy here with us today. That's great. Is there objection for dispensing of the reading of the Journal? Chair hears none, and the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to confirmation of the Journal? Chair hears none, the Journal is confirmed. All senators who have bills or resolutions introduced, please bring them to the Secretary's desk. The Secretary will read reports of standing committees.
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on State and Local Governmental Operations has had under consideration the following legislation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation: That House Bill 2 EX do pass; that House Bill 3 EX do pass; that House Bill 4 EX do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Gin of the 47th District Chairman. Mr. President, that completes the order.
It is now time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? Senator from the 56th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the senators from the 16th and the 50th.
The 16th and the 50th? Senators, the 16th and the 50th? 16th and the 50th, all right. Without objections, Senators from 16th and 50th. Senator from the 6th.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask unanimous consent to excuse the senators from the 2nd, the 7th, the 9th, the 10th, the 41st, the 44th, and the 22nd.
I mean, you don't have much of a team here today, Senator, do you? I tell you what, Secretary, why don't we suspend roll call here? Is there objection to suspending roll call? Without objection, roll call suspended. I don't want to make y'all look any worse than what it is right now. All right. It is now time for our morning devotion. All senators, please take your seats and cease all conversation. I would ask the doorkeeper to secure the chamber at this time. I now recognize a minority leader from the 55th District to lead us in our pledge and introduce our chaplain of the day. Senator?
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Will we say the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Georgia flag. Pledge of Allegiance, Georgia flag. I have an awesome duty this morning to introduce to you one of my former neighbors, but he's still my constituent, Dr. Michael D. Woods. Dr. Woods is an awesome person. He's vibrant, he's most of the time full of vigor and vitality. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in Bible from Carver Bible College. He earned a Master's degree, Master of Divinity, and Doctor of Ministry degrees from Luther Rice Seminary. He's authored two books, What Now, Lord?, A Discipleship Manual, and Transformational Preaching, a homiletics manual. He founded a ministry with excellence and the MWE School of Ministry in 2005 with locations across multiple counties and online. He's an adjunct professor for 19 years at Luther Rice Seminary and served six years on the Board of Directors. He's the founder of Mission Alliance International, fostering missionary work in Haiti, Jamaica, and Belize. He was the senior pastor of Mount Mariah Baptist Church from January 1984, transforming it into a hub for expatriate preaching and theological training. He led the Mount Mariah Institute of Biblical Studies, a satellite location for three Bible He was the interim pastor and later senior pastor at O'Callaghan Chapel Baptist Church, contributing five and a half years of dedicated service. He conducted ministry in various U.S. cities and internationally, a fervent love for the people of God, a passion for teaching and preaching the Word, and a commitment to helping others develop their gifts for ministry with excellence. He would probably say one of his biggest accomplishments is being married to Marilyn T. Woods. She's a retired teacher from the Cabot County School Board of Education, and they are the proud parents of three married children and blessed with seven great-grandchildren. Please welcome Dr. Michael D. Woods.
Good morning, everybody. And I count it an honor and a privilege to stand before you this morning. The first time I served as chaplain for the day years ago when Joe Frank Harris was the governor and Zell Miller was lieutenant governor. I've been here a number of times thereafter. The last time I was here was at the behest of Speaker David Ralston a few years ago. And I am thankful for this privilege to stand before you today. I honor Governor Kemp, Lieutenant Governor, Speaker, and you all are in my prayers day and night. For I love being able to go and travel the world, and people ask me, where are you from? And I say, I'm from Georgia. So thank you for this privilege and opportunity to speak a few words and to offer a word of prayer. And I'd just like to read a passage that I am absolutely certain has been read under this gold dome many times, even probably before I was born. Micah 6 and 8. He has shown you, oh man, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before thy God? And it is no secret that our political arena, from the national level right down to the local level, is filled with duplicity, hypocrisy, and individuals who care little or nothing about anyone other than the one they see in the mirror. And therefore, I encourage you, you, you be the one, you be the one that will operate with integrity, you be the one that will be genuine and sincere in your claim to believe in God and to believe in the Bible, to believe in the Koran, or to believe in some other book that communicates holiness and righteousness from a divine person. In the midst of all, you be the one who will put what is right above what is profitable or what is convenient or what my party is trying to persuade me to be. You be the one. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you. We thank you this morning for just blessing us with this wonderful, wonderful day in the midst of all that we're experiencing, even if there are any sitting here today with aches and pains and challenges and difficulties. Every one of our situations is far better than it could be, Father. And Lord, I'm thankful, I'm thankful. I thank you for Governor Kemp and his stewardship of our state. Thank you for all of the good things that have gone on in Georgia under his leadership. Thank you today for Lieutenant Governor Jones and for his readiness to serve. We thank you today for the Speaker, and I thank you for my senator, Senator Butler. I thank you for all of these men and women who meet Father God in this place of service. And I ask even now that your hand would be upon them, even those who are absent today for one reason or another, if it's sickness, if it's calamity, if it's problem, if it's trouble, Father God, I ask that you reach your hand within their circumstance and within their situation and bring healing, bring remedy, bring answers to their questions and solutions to their problems and directions for their confusion, Father. We ask your blessings today. And as I prepare to close this prayer and these men and women commence to their business, bless them to remember the words of truth, the words of dignity, the words of honor. Bless them to remember the morality that was even poured into many of them as they were carried in and out of churches as children and taught, "Our Father, which art in heaven, the Lord is my shepherd; make a joyful noise unto the Lord." And they were taught various scriptures and principles about you, God, and your holiness and righteousness. And bless these men and women as they execute their responsibility as our senators to remember that they all and we all are accountable to you. And at the end of the day, we will stand before you and be judged for our stewardship in this world. And for these things, Lord, we thank you. Believing that you will answer. Amen. Amen. Amen.
It is always a pleasure to introduce the doctor of the day, and I'm going to call on the senator from the 32nd to introduce Dr. Marshall here from Atlanta, Northside Hospital. But always a pleasure to have doctors of all kinds from all over the state come and give us their time down here at the Capitol, and we just greatly appreciate that. And I will call on the senator from 32nd to introduce him.
Good morning, everyone. I want to introduce you our doctor of the day today, Dr. Jeff Marshall. He's chief of the Northside Hospital Cardiovascular Institute. He's board certified in interventional cardiology and has nearly three decades of experience in the field of cardiology, and during that time has published extensively, trained and worked among some of the best physicians in the world, and serving in numerous leadership roles, including a very important one. He's on the board of the Composite State Medical Board and is their former chair. He finds reward in the doctor-patient relationship, especially when he can apply novel treatments for people entrusted in his care. In his free time, Dr. Marshall likes paddle boarding, bike riding, fly fishing, and spending time with his grandchildren. Please help me welcome Dr. Jeff Marshall.
Thank you, Dr. Kirkpatrick, and thank you, Mr. Speaker Jones. My name is Jeff Marshall. I'm an interventional cardiologist, and thanks for being here. From all the doctors in Georgia, we really appreciate what y'all do for us. Without what y'all do, we can't do what we do. And as a member of the Composite Medical Board, we really appreciate y'all's support. Georgia's a great place to be a doctor because of folks like you. Thanks for your service to our state. We appreciate it.
It is now time. Does any senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? I recognize the senator from the 40th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, many of us are deeply hurting because of what's happening in the Middle East. Just a few weeks ago, on November 6th, this suffering became very personal in my district as word quickly spread that 21-year-old Rose Lubin from Dunwoody lost her life in the line of duty as a border officer in Israel. Many of my friends and supporters personally knew Rose and her family. I heard the news on November 6th when I arrived at my rock climbing gym and found a very distraught climbing partner who had just found out. My communication director's daughter was friends with Rose at Dunwoody High School. It is therefore my honor this morning to be able to recognize Rose's life through the passage of a Senate resolution. Mr. President, would you please ask the secretary to read Senate Resolution 11 EX?
Secretary, read the resolution, please.
Senate Resolution 11 EX by Senator Harold of the 40th and others. A resolution honoring the life and memory of Rose Ida Lubin and for other purposes. Whereas Sergeant Rose Ida Lubin, known to her family and friends as Rosie, was born December 1st, 2002, to David and Robin Lubin and grew up as the oldest of five siblings in Dunwoody, Georgia. And whereas Rose was an exceptional student throughout her life and an accomplished wrestler, flag football player, cheerleader, dancer, singer, and more at Dunwoody High School. And whereas, following her deep and abiding faith in connection to the Jewish people, Rose made aliyah, the return to Israel afforded to all Jews after graduating high school in 2021. And whereas, in March 2002, Rose enlisted in the Israel Defense Forces where she became a combat trained soldier specializing in terrorism and was deployed with the Israeli Border Police. And whereas, on October 7th, 2023, an off-duty Sergeant Lubin bravely defended her host kibbutz in neighboring communities near the Gaza border from a brutal terrorist attack and helped get injured victims to safety. And whereas, just weeks after the Hamas onslaught, Sergeant Lubin's young life was taken much too soon by another terrorist attack near Harid's Gate, one of the oldest entrances to the old city of Jerusalem where she was stationed. And whereas, Sergeant Lubin was an exceptional daughter, stepdaughter, sibling, granddaughter, niece, cousin, student, and friend who was admired and loved by everyone who knew her. And whereas, Sergeant Lubin gave her life protecting and defending the Jewish people and all Israeli citizens from terrorism. And whereas, Sergeant Lubin's sacrifice in memory serves as a reminder of the urgent need for peace to prevail in Israel and the surrounding region where future generations can live without the threat of constant conflict. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body honor the life and memory of Sergeant Rose Lubin and extend their deepest and most sincere regret at her passing. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Though I didn't personally know Rose, it's clear from listening to stories about her that she was a passionate, empathic young woman, a free spirit who didn't hesitate to do her own thing. From a very young age, Rose was determined to serve and protect the people of Israel, telling kids on the playground, "I can be friends with you now, but I'm moving to Israel when I'm 18." And that's exactly what she was doing when she protected her home kibbutz from Hamas terrorists on October 7th, and again when she was attacked while on duty guarding the old city of Jerusalem. Robin and David, I know that you are proud of Rose. And as a mom myself of two young adult children, I understand the desire to protect them. I also know what it's like to have a child who's born with a passion that just can't be subdued, and I know that there are other members of this body who also know that experience. As parents, we must let them go to do the things that they were sent to this world to do, even though that comes with risk. I know that every senator here today holds your family in love and prayer, giving you the strength necessary to keep Rose's spirit alive and kicking. Let us all stand and recognize David and Ruben Lubin and their family.
The resolution on the consent calendar is adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw or commit? You have before you a consent calendar of local bills. Mr. Secretary, have any objections been filed for any of the bills on the local consent calendar?
Mr. President, there are no objections filed.
Is there objection to agreeing to the report the committee on the state and local government of operations which is favorable to the passage of the bills on the local consent calendar? Chair here is none, and the report the committee has agreed to. Questions on the passage of the bills on the local consent calendar? All those in favor will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machine. On the passage of the bill, the yays are 46 and the nays are 0. This bill on the local consent calendar, having received requisite constitutional majority, is therefore passed. It is now time to consider the confirmation of the governor's appointments. I recognize the majority leader.
Thank you.
Secretary, read the script first.
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Assignments has had under consideration the appointments made by the governor submitted to the Senate on November 29th, 2023 that require Senate confirmation and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation: The appointments to be confirmed as submitted. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Recognize the majority leader.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the names of the governor's appointments as they have been printed and placed on the desk.
Is there objection to dispensing of the reading of the governor's appointments? Hearing none, the reading of the names of the appointments is dispensed with, and I recognize Senator from the 51st for another motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent that one roll call vote suffice for the confirmation of the governor's appointments unless a Senator designates an appointee, be removed from the list, and voted on separately.
Is there objection to the confirming of the appointments with one roll call vote? That objects, and I recognize Senator from the 6th. Senator, for what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 14th.
All right, without objection, the Senator from the 14th is excused. Thank you, Senator. Senator from the 51st again.
Mr. President, I move that the governor's appointments be confirmed as submitted.
All right. And you wave right to speak to the motion, I guess? Okay. Is there objection to confirming the appointments with one roll call vote? Hearing none, we will confirm all appointments with one roll call vote. And does any other Senator wish to speak for or against that motion? Hearing none, the questions on the confirmation of the governor's appointments? All those in favor will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machines. On the confirmation of the governor's appointees, the yays are 45 and the nays are 3, and the governor's appointments are therefore confirmed. Recognize the majority leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent that the following bills and resolutions be engrossed. House Bill 1 EX, SB 3 EX, HR 3 EX.
Majority leader has moved that HB 1 EX, SB 3 EX, and HR 3 EX be engrossed. Is there objection? Objections from the Senator from the 22nd. All right, all those in favor of engrossment? Would you like to speak on your objection, Senator? I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor of engrossment will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary, unlock the machines. On the vote, the yays are 30 and the nays are 20, and the motion has passed. Now moving on to the rules calendar. Secretary?
House Bill 1 EX by Representative Lever to the 123rd. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition of this number of state house districts to provide for a short title to provide for contingent nature of this act and the circumstances under which it shall not apply according to the enforceability of prior provisions under federal law to provide for the continuation of present members to provide for a short title to provide for an effective date to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting recommends that this bill do pass. Respectfully submitted, Senator Echols of the 49th District Chairman. Mr. President, a minority report has been filed. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Recognize the Senator from the 50th to present the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the Senate. Today I present to you for your consideration House Bill 1 EX, which if passed will adopt a new set of electoral districts for the Georgia House. First, a little history to set this in context. On October 26th, 2023, Judge Steve Jones of the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia entered an opinion and memorandum of decision in which he ruled that the House district maps that we approved in 2021 violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. As a result, he ordered that new maps be drawn. Now, instead of drawing them himself without allowing us any input, he kindly allowed us to remedy the violation by drawing new maps ourselves. He also thoughtfully gave us specific guidance in how to comply with his order. To clarify the manner in which we can remedy the violations ourselves, Judge Jones wrote that, and I quote, "The remedy involves two additional majority-black house districts in South Metro Atlanta, one additional majority-black house district in West Metro Atlanta, and two additional majority-black house districts in and around Macon Bibb." And that's on page 509 of his order. There is a lot at stake here, and the objective is simple: compliance. We will comply, and the bill you have before you will adopt a map that does just that. It fully complies with Judge Jones's order. As Judge Jones instructed, this map enacts five new majority-black districts. In South Metro, it creates House District 74 and House District 117 with black voting age populations of 66% and approximately 60%, respectfully. In West Metro, it creates House District 64 with a black voting age population of 56.31%. In Macon-Bibb area, it creates House District 145 and House District 149 with black voting age populations of 50.3% and 50.03%, respectfully. Judge Jones ordered five new majority-black districts, and this plan creates and establishes five new majority-black districts and decreases the number of majority-white districts by five. It does not purport to tell Judge Jones that we know better than he does and that we have done something different but better that he should accept as equivalent without explaining how it is equivalent. It doesn't do that. Instead, it follows his order. This is the only plan that was presented to the redistricting committee in the House that complies with Judge Jones's order. As you might expect, as we saw in the Senate maps as well, creating five new districts was very disruptive to existing districts. There are significant ripple effects, especially when you create five new districts. Ripple effects result primarily from constitutional and legal requirements that district sizes be the same. We are allowed some statistical deviation, and in Georgia, we have traditionally limited ourselves to plus or minus 1%. So we took from areas, excuse me, so once we took areas from existing districts to create those new five districts, we had to add population to the existing districts from which these fives were created to get the existing districts back to within the deviation of the appropriate size, which in the House is 59,511. So population was taken from neighboring districts, and then the neighboring districts were short. So then population was taken from their neighbors, and the process continued. The House followed existing traditional redistricting principles to work on the remaining districts, which included maintaining district populations, limiting additional split counties by only adding a single county split, drawing the new districts utilizing the most recent precincts from county governments, which makes it easier for local election officials, ensuring all districts are contiguous, ensuring all districts are reasonably compact in shape, ensuring communities of interest are protected as far as possible, and avoiding the unnecessary pairing of incumbents. Now, this plan does involve several incumbent pairings, which is not surprising when the House had to reconfigure 56 districts. And the House redistricting chair stated that each of those pairings pained him greatly. In a perfect world, the House could have added five new districts without any pairings or drastic changes to the existing districts, but there was no feasible way to do that while complying with the judge's order. And contrary to assertions that the House was overly partisan in this component of the plan, the House did not inflict political casualties on solely the opposing party. The House inflicted damage on both parties. Throughout the process, the primary overriding objective was to comply with the court's order: five additional majority-black districts in specified areas. Much has been said about the process here. We've been accused of moving too fast, of not being transparent, but we are under a court-imposed deadline, and we did not receive the court's order until October 26th. Public hearings have been held in both chambers, which allowed numerous parties to speak. We establish and maintain a portal for public comment and allowed an alternate plan to be voted on even though no bill enacting it had been filed or assigned to the committee in the House. In the time constraints we've had, we have been as transparent and deliberate as the time allows. The stakes are high here. We need to act. The court will not give us another chance. We take seriously our obligation to the court and to each of you, members of both parties, to prepare and present maps that comply with the court's orders. Now, I'd like to walk through the changes that were made in the House. I'll start with the process, which was obviously similar to the process we had here in the Senate. First, the chairman in the House carefully reviewed Judge Jones's order. And as I've already mentioned, the order was very specific. The remedy involved two additional black house districts in South Metro, one additional majority-black house district in West Metro, and two additional majority-black house districts in and around Macon-Bibb. The chairman asked to talk with every representative who reached out to him to talk about their districts from both parties. The House committee consulted with legal counsel and then began drawing districts with Gina Wright in her office. They first drew the new majority-black districts that are required by the order in South Metro Atlanta, West Metro Atlanta, and Macon-Bibb. As we'll discuss, and as you can see to my right, those are District 64 in West Metro As you might expect, as we saw in the Senate maps as well, creating five new districts was very disruptive to existing districts. There are significant ripple effects, especially when you create five new districts. Ripple effects result primarily from constitutional and legal requirements that district sizes be the same. We are allowed some statistical deviation, and in Georgia, we have traditionally limited ourselves to plus or minus 1%. So we took from areas, excuse me, so once we took areas from existing districts to create those new five districts, we had to add population to the existing districts from which these fives were created to get the existing districts back to within the deviation of the appropriate size, which in the House is 59,511. So population was taken from neighboring districts, and then the neighboring districts were short. So then population was taken from their neighbors, and the process continued. The House followed existing traditional redistricting principles to work on the remaining districts, which included maintaining district populations, limiting additional split counties by only adding a single county split, drawing the new districts utilizing the most recent precincts from county governments, which makes it easier for local election officials, ensuring all districts are contiguous, ensuring all districts are reasonably compact in shape, ensuring communities of interest are protected as far as possible, and avoiding the unnecessary pairing of incumbents. Now, this plan does involve several incumbent pairings, which is not surprising when the House had to reconfigure 56 districts. And the House Redistricting Chair stated that each of those pairings pained him greatly. In a perfect world, the House could have added five new districts without any pairings or drastic changes to the existing districts, but there was no feasible way to do that while complying with the judge's order. And contrary to assertions that the House was overly partisan in this component of the plan, the House did not inflict political casualties on solely the opposing party. The House inflicted damage on both parties. Throughout the process, the primary overriding objective was to comply with the court's order: five additional majority-black districts in specified areas. Much has been said about the process here. We've been accused of moving too fast, of not being transparent, but we are under a court-imposed deadlines, and we did not receive the court's order until October 26. Public hearings have been held in both chambers, which allowed numerous parties to speak. We establish and maintain a portal for public comment and allowed an alternate plan to be voted on even though no bill enacting it had been filed or assigned to the committee in the House. In the time constraints we've had, we have been as transparent and deliberate as the time allows. The stakes are high here. We need to act. The court will not give us another chance. We take seriously our obligation to the court and to each of you, Members of both parties, to prepare and present maps that comply with the court's orders. Now, I'd like to walk through the changes that were made in the House. I'll start with the process, which was obviously similar to the process we had here in the Senate. First, the Chairman in the House carefully reviewed Judge Jones's order, and as I've already mentioned, the order was very specific. The remedy involved two additional black House districts in South Metro, one additional majority-black House district in West Metro, and two additional majority-black House districts in and around Macon-Bibb. The Chairman asked to talk with every representative who reached out to him to talk about their districts from both parties. The House Committee consulted with legal counsel and then began drawing districts with Gina Wright in her office. They first drew the new majority-black districts that are required by the order in South Metro Atlanta, West Metro Atlanta, and Macon-Bibb. As we'll discuss, and as you can see to my right, those are District 64 in West Metro in Douglas County, District 74 and 117 in South Metro, primarily in Clayton and Henry Counties, Districts 145 and 149 in the Macon-Bibb area, including Milledgeville. With this configuration, almost all of the black votes, voters, covered by the areas in the plaintiff's expert's districts in those areas are included in majority-black state House districts. The only area not included is Griffin, but that was not included in a majority-black district for one of the plaintiff's expert's plans. So the House plan involves changes to 56 districts. I'll begin with the new majority-black districts and then work through some of the changes in the other areas. So with House District 64, House District 64 is one of the new majority-black districts required by the court. It's located in almost exactly the same location as the proposed district from the plaintiff-expert, Mr. Eselston. That design was improved, however, by locating the district wholly in Douglas County. It is a majority-black district at 56.31% and is currently open. As configured, there is only one split precinct, and the primary community of interest here is the suburbs of Douglasville. Next, House District 74. This is a new majority-black district and is located in Clayton and Henry Counties. This is almost identical to the version drawn by Mr. Cooper in his expert report. It is an open seat and majority-black at approximately 66%. It includes the Atlanta Motor Speedway and Panhandle of Clayton County, including most of Lovejoy. The design follows the 2022 precincts or existing district lines. It does not split Irondale, which is a place of one of plaintiff-experts referenced, excuse me, which is a place one of the plaintiff-experts referenced during the trial. One significant difference is they were able to design this district without changing other Clayton districts besides District 78. Next is House District 117. District 117 is located wholly in Henry County and is taken from the design of Mr. Eselston's map. It includes only Henry County precincts and is an open seat with a black population of approximately 60%. The communities in this district include almost all of McDonough, portions of Locust Grove, and utilized I-75 as a boundary. The configuration also minimizes precinct splits. Next is House District 145. Now, this is the Macon area. District 145 includes portions of Bibb and Monroe Counties. It is an open seat and is majority-black, drawn primarily from Mr. Eselston's version of this district. It includes the county seat of Forsyth and utilizes primarily whole precincts in Bibb County. With this configuration, all the incumbents in Macon have a district to run in, unlike plaintiff's version. House District 149. This district runs from Macon to Milledgeville in a similar configuration to Mr. Eselston's map, but designed in a better way to avoid additional splits of Baldwin County. This district includes portions of Bibb and Jones Counties on the way to Milledgeville following Highway 49 through Jones County. The primary split is in East Macon-Five. This district includes Representative Vance as the incumbent and avoids changes, the split, changing the split of Baldwin County. Changes to other districts? So moving to the adjustments around the majority-black districts, I'll explain these changes. But first, a few things to note about these remaining districts. First, both the plaintiff's experts testified that they did not know a lot of details about Georgia or Georgia geography. Our process was informed by Mrs. Wright's extensive knowledge of Georgia and conversations with representatives about their areas. We believe we have reached a plan that is far better than those proposed by the plaintiffs while complying with every detail that the judge required. Second, it is important to note that the ripple effect is real when drawing these plans. When new districts are located in certain areas, nearby population has to be adjusted. Those changes then ripple out, in this case primarily north, until they are resolved. Third, the 56 changed districts here are less than those proposed by at least one of the plaintiff's experts, so we were able to maintain district cores. Just for reference, Mr. Cooper changed more than 90 of the enacted House districts on his proposed plans. Obviously, here, we're at 56. Fourth, the House took into account the work on county election officials who have to update the voter registration database. By drawing the map this way, we are working to minimize the amount of work required before the 2024 elections. Fifth, the plan does not eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts. Judge Jones was clear on page 510 of the order that we cannot eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts. While he doesn't define that term, it is clear that he is referring to existing majority-black districts. On page 511, he refers to whether the plan provides black voters with additional opportunity districts, not all minority voters. The other references to opportunity districts in the order clearly refer to black voters on page 106, 145, 146, 211, 268, 417 through 420, and 427. The House plan does not eliminate any existing majority-black districts, and it takes five existing majority-white districts, District 64, 74, 145, and 149, and converts them to majority-black districts. Fifth, it's important to remember that we believe the 2021 House plan complied with the Voting Rights Act and are pushing an appeal of the judge's orders. That is why you will see language in this bill that reverts the 2021 plan, excuse me, that reverts to the 2021 plan if the appeal is successful. This mirrors language used by the Democratic majority in 2002, when the state senate plan was not precleared in time for use in that election. But if anyone is upset with how a district is configured, remember, we did not draw these districts this way in 2021 originally, and we did not want to redraw these districts. We are doing this because we were sued by democratically affiliated groups. Other changed districts that I need to walk through is in Cobb, Douglas, and Fulton. The first group of changed districts centers around the creation of District 64 in Douglas County. District 66 stays wholly within Douglas County and takes more of the north part of the county as District 61 moves out of Douglas County. District 65 and 61 both exit Douglas and take more of Fulton County to make up the difference. In order to deal with the addition of the new district in Douglas County, District 61 shifts north and up into Cobb County, touching several districts along the way, which are only slightly adjusted to address population issues. That's 56, 57, 58, and 60. The House also made some changes at the request of the member in District 56, who had some personal requests for that district. Moving up into Cobb County, District 40, which had been a majority-white district, collapses to accommodate the creation of the new 64. That leads to the first pairing on this plan: Representative Anowitz and Representative Stoner in District 42, which is primarily a Smyrna-based district. The changes from collapsing District 40 work up through Cobb County as districts shift north for a population circling around from Douglas County. District 37 shifts slightly south but keeps its core in Marietta. Likewise, District 35 also shifts south, leaving some areas of Acworth as it moves into Marietta. District 35 then shifts south as well, taking a portion of District 36's population. District 36 adjusts in the north with District 35, then District 19 takes portions of Cobb to create room for District 40 to take the remaining portion of Spalding and the portions of Douglas that are not currently included in Districts 66 and 64. This combination adds the new majority-black seat in Douglas while complying with traditional redistricting principles and taking into account the communities involved in this area while also creating two districts wholly within Douglas County. Now, for the Macon area changes, we've already discussed the creation of House Districts 145 and 149. The remaining changes result from, excuse me, the remaining changes result from that. District 142 remains a district wholly in Bibb County, maintaining its prior district core and the existing incumbent. This is an existing minority-opportunity district that is maintained as required by the court's order. District 143 is the minority leader and likewise is maintained. With the new majority-black districts added in other parts of Bibb, District 143 shifts south into Houston County. Judge Jones talked about connections between Macon and Houston County on page 388 of his order. This district is composed primarily of whole precincts and ensures that districts can continue to elect the candidate of choice of black voters. District 147 accommodates the entirety of District, or excuse me, accommodates the entry of District 143 into Houston by shifting over to Peach County by a few precincts. Houston County. Thank you, Mr. President. Houston County. I apologize to anyone from Houston County listening. That is my fault. It is Houston County. The remaining distance between District 135 is filled by the rural District 134, which includes the other portions of North Peach County, along with all of Upson and Crawford with the southern part of Lamar County. These counties share an agricultural focus and rural character that makes them logical to go together. Flipping back to the east, District 144 shifts north into the rest of Jones and then takes Jasper and Putnam. Jasper and Putnam have historically gone together in past plans and were together in the 2021 plan in a different district. This approach maintains a district for Representative Washburn and enables the elimination of a county split in Jasper County, so it is now whole. District 135 takes all of Pike and portions of nearby Lamar and Griffin, which matches past maps that connected Spalding and Lamar. This combination pairs Representative Knight and Representative Camp in the same district, but this was necessary because the population was moving north after adding new majority-black seats in Macon-Bibb. District 118 moves from an east-west oriented district to a north-south district. It maintains its Butts County core and takes portions of Monroe and Newton. It exits from Henry County to make room for the new majority-black seat in that area. This has an I-75 connection, and these counties share a suburban connection with some rural areas in North Monroe. Finishing out the southern part of Metro, the new District 82 has moved from DeKalb County and now encompasses population that was previously the core of District 74 with some additional population in the Griffin area. Moving to Clayton and Henry County, we've already discussed the creations of District 74 and 117 as new majority-black seats. Those new seats necessarily push the remaining districts north like a wave that ripples up through DeKalb and Gwinnett Counties. District 78 shifts to the east, matching some of the requests of Representative Douglas from that area that were, that we were able to accommodate. By configuring the districts this way, we were able to avoid making further changes to Clayton County, which makes things easier for election officials to implement. District 116 and 115 both shift north into South DeKalb. This is similar to the configuration of the prior DeKalb districts. Essentially, the existing Henry-focused districts in North Henry shift north into DeKalb and accommodate the addition of the new majority-black districts in South Henry. District 81 takes the remaining population of Henry County and ensures that Representative Daniel can still have a district that represents primarily Republican voters in this side of the county. District 81 has a strong community of interest in the Lake Dow and eastern regions of the county and does not cross I-75. It also includes portions of Locust Grove. Before we move into DeKalb and Gwinnett, let's take a step back east. District 114 maintains much of its existing footprint in Morgan and Newton. The change in District 118 to the south shifts 114 north into Walton County and into a little more of Newton County. District 113 remains wholly in Newton County, even with the changes in the adjourning districts. District 92 is now placed wholly in Rockdale County instead of stretching east-west like it did previously. That is a more compact setup and unites communities around Conyers in a single district. The area covered by District 91 previously ran from Rockdale into DeKalb County with communities that share I-20 in common and Stonecrest with its connections to Rockdale. The Walton County Districts move a little more into Gwinnett County, but that is mostly ripple effects from District 114 moving into Walton County based on those changes to the south. And I'm almost done. So let's look at DeKalb and Gwinnett Counties. Previously, the districts in DeKalb ran as stripes from the north to the south. That pattern is maintained here with the districts shifting north but still maintaining their overall shape. As you already discussed, District 82 is moving from the DeKalb area south along with District 81. That makes room for the shifts here in the new majority-black districts. Again, this is a ripple, excuse me, again, this is ripple effects north, but each incumbent maintains a seat with the exception of Representative Evans and Representative Draper, who are paired in District 90. District 88 is untouched, and Districts 93, 94, and 95 turn and move north into Gwinnett County. They already were headed that direction but just go further north now. The shapes in this area are largely dictated by incumbent locations. Configuring the districts like this enables us to maintain an incumbent in each district. When we go to Gwinnett, we see the wave is dissipating from ripple effects with minimal changes to 108 and 109. District 101 moves over to DeKalb County, so that results in a pairing of Representative Kennard and Representative Park in District 106. The remaining districts nearby take in new territory to address the movement of District 101. And that completes the changes made to this map. And with that, Mr. President, I will yield for questions.
You do have a few questions, Senator. Senator from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Does the Senator yield?
I do.
Senator, comparing and looking at traditional redistricting principles, comparing the 21 plan versus a new House plan, what is the difference when it comes to the splitting of counties?
So the, this plan actually reduces the county splits by one and also uses the 2023 precinct boundaries wherever those were available.
All right, thank you.
Senator from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator yield?
Yes, I do.
Senator, I heard you talk about the Democratic Caucus plan. They presented a plan in committee or talked about a plan in committee?
They did talk about a plan, yes.
Did they ever present a plan?
They did not.
Did they ever try to amend this plan?
No, they did not.
The plan they talked about, if you will, Senator, for the yield?
I will.
The plan that the Democrats talked about, did it have five minority, new minority-majority districts?
No, the House Democratic plan only had four minority districts, which did not comply with the judge's order. So the only plan that the House had that complied with the judge's orders is the one you're seeing, which has five minority-black districts.
Thank you.
Recognize the Senator from the 29th.
Senator yield?
I will.
Senator, to kind of dovetail off the question that was just asked, is it not true that the House added the new majority-black districts in the exact locations requested by the plaintiffs in the lawsuit?
That is true. They are in the exact locations as requested.
Thank you.
Recognize Senator from the 42nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Senator yield?
I will.
Senator, would you agree that on page 513 of Judge Jones's order, there are 10 state House districts where he specifically found violations of the Voting Rights Act and vote deletion?
I don't have that order in front of me, but the Senator knows of what she speaks.
Right, it's 10 districts. And how many districts are changed in this plan?
There are 56 districts that were changed.
56. And you did reference the two experts that presented to the court. It is, would you agree that it's true that the court specifically referred the General Assembly to the remedial plans offered during the court case for all three sets of plans: State Senate, State House, and Congressional?
So right now, we're talking about the House plans and So right now, we're talking about the House plans, and yes, I will agree that-
You would agree, yes, he referred us to this. Would you also agree that on page 141 of the judge's order, it is stated that the Esselstein Plan, and you, I believe, referred to Mr. Esselstein several times, only affected 25 districts?
That's true. So one expert for the plaintiffs affected 90, the other expert affected 25. This map affected 56. And once again, I want to reiterate the point that the Senator from the 19th came up with. No alternative plan was presented in committee, no bills were dropped, no amendments were made. So if an expert's, one's 25, one's 90, and we're looking at 56, I think this is a pretty good map.
Will you yield for another question?
I will.
Would you also acknowledge that on page 113 of Judge Jones's order, the judge specifically notes that under the Cooper Plan, 86% of voters would remain in the same district?
Once again, I don't have the order in front of me, but if that's in the order, the Senator knows what she speaks.
Senator, do you know what percentage of voters remain in the same district under this particular plan?
If I walk through it during my presentation, which I don't believe I did, I'm not, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Would you then acknowledge that given the 25 districts disrupted in Esselstein, the 10 districts listed in the court order, and the 86% of voters in the Cooper Plans remaining in the same districts, that this map unnecessarily disrupts Georgia voters for partisan purposes?
I disagree with that. I believe this map complies with the judge's order as I laid out in my presentation. And, you know, there's too much at stake for us not to comply. That's our goal. That's what we did, and I look forward to hearing what the judge has to say.
Senator, your time has expired, so you're free to yield the way.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Senator from the 1st, would you like to speak, you weigh? Senator from the 20th, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
With all due respect to my dear friend from North Georgia, is it not true, Mr. President, that my home county, created in 1821, was named after former Georgia Governor John Houston and not Texas Resident General Sam Houston?
I believe the Senator knows what he speaks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought the same thing when he was in the well, too. Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against a measure? Senator from the minority leader, would you like to go first, or would you like Senator from the 42nd to go? Y'all came on at the same time. Y'all came on at the same time, is the reason why I'm asking. Senator from the 55th, recognize Senator from the 55th, minority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, you have heard a repeat of many things. And before this day is over, you will hear repetition of many more things. Repetition of the same thing. Good morning to everyone. I am Senator Gloria Butler, and I am the minority leader of the Georgia State Senate. Today, we are here to discuss and debate the proposals for the Congressional and State House maps. A federal court has ordered that each of these maps be redrawn in compliance with the Voting Rights Act. The Democratic Caucus recognizes that fair maps are crucial to ensuring that every vote in Georgia counts equally and that no voter in Georgia is subject to discrimination in the election process. Therefore, we believe that the court's order must be strictly followed in each of the maps being proposed today. Last month, Judge Jones issued a 516-page order, which found that the 2021 Congressional and State House maps proposed and passed by Republicans violated the Voting Rights Act and discriminated against black voters. In regard to the State House map, Judge Jones held that the enacted House districts 61, 64, 74, 78, 117, 133, 142, 143, 145, 147, and 149 violated the Voting Rights Act. He then ordered that two additional majority-black House districts be drawn in South Metro Atlanta, that one additional majority-black House district be drawn in West Metro Atlanta, and that two additional majority-black House districts in and around Macon-Bibb. The Republican proposal before us does not comply with the judge's order. First, the Republican proposal changes 56 districts, while the court only identified 11 districts as violating the Voting Rights Act. Second, the Republican proposal unnecessarily takes away or dilutes minority voting power in two majority-minority districts in DeKalb and Gwinnett Counties. For example, District 81 was a majority-minority district in the enacted map and is no longer a majority-minority district in the Republican proposal. Indeed, District 81 will increase from 47% white voting age population to nearly 66% that. Further, minority voting power is decreased in districts 101 and 105. So instead, these maps created by Republicans is just a game. And what it's done is switch one out to the other, switched out a minority-opportunity district for another. Now for the Congressional map. Judge Jones ordered that enacted Congressional districts 3, 6, 11, 13, and 14 violated the Voting Rights Act. To remedy this, and I will repeat, to remedy this, Judge Jones ordered that an additional majority-black Congressional district be drawn in the West Metro Atlanta area. As drawn, the Republican proposal violates the court order. The proposed map does not expand black voters' opportunity to elect candidates of their choice as ordered by the court. While the proposed map technically adds a majority-black district, it adds the district by excluding a substantial number of black voters who have suffered from vote dilution. Over 140,000 black voters in the plaintiff illustrative map are still denied the ability to elect a candidate of choice in this proposed map. Additionally, this map would eliminate a minority-opportunity district, which is currently the seat of a black woman incumbent. The map eliminates minority-opportunity district in Georgia 7th District in order to create a new majority-black district in Georgia 06. More specifically, the majority-minority district in Georgia 7 goes from 67% minority-voting age population to 33% minority-voting age population. This is not a game. Additionally, this map packs about 1.5 million voters of color in the Atlanta Metro into four minority-opportunity districts, who are currently in five minority-opportunity districts. This is a prime example of majority leaders ignoring the spirit of the court's order. The federal court order instructed the state to expand minority-opportunity district, yet this map reduces them. Additionally, this map reduces the voting strength of black voters in McDonnell by splitting the city among several districts. In conclusion of my remarks, ultimately, the Republican proposals for the Congressional and State House districts use the same gerrymandering tactics that were used in redrawing the Senate districts and violates the court order. Colleagues, I ask that you not disregard the court's order. Instead, you should vote no on each of these maps and protect the voting rights of black Georgians. I'm reminded of what the pastor charged us with this morning. He said, "Be the one. Be the one that does the right thing. Follow the judge's orders and draw the districts in the areas that he specified." The Senate-proposed and Congressional maps fall short of a lawful remedy. Mr. President and members of the Senate, thanks for your attention, and I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. I recognize Senator from the 42nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be the one that does the right thing. House Bill 1EX does not remedy the Voting Rights Act violations that led to this special session. It does not comply with a clear language of Judge Jones's order. Further, it involves a partisan gerrymandering that seeks to cement the political power of the majority party with little regard of the fact that it affects the right of all Georgians to select the candidate of their choice. Judge Jones ordered the General Assembly to create five additional majority-black districts. To achieve this result, the majority has dismantled other Voting Rights Act-protected districts. Gone is House District 81. This district allowed black and Hispanic voters to join together and elect candidates of their choice. Gone, too, is the House District 105 in Gwinnett County. This district allowed black, Hispanic, and Asian voters to work together and elect candidates of their choice. These districts are now represented by white incumbents. Like Alabama before us, Georgia Republicans thumbed their nose at a federal court order. These maps do not remedy the Voting Rights Act violations Judge Jones found. They will likely result in the court taking away the General Assembly's power to draw these maps and remedy those violations. Georgia Republicans would rather force the court to draw these maps than pass fair maps that recognize the growing power of voters of color. House Bill 1EX is a partisan gerrymanderer that does not empower any voters to choose candidates of their choice. This map weakens the power of black voters. It exists only to entrench the power of the current majority. For these reasons, we disagree as the minority party with House Bill 1EX. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. House Bill 1EX, under this proposed map, like the Senate map, 1EX is unlawful and violates the court's order. It's a map that Judge Jones can and should reject. I oppose it for a couple of different reasons. First, based on a binding precedent in our 11th Circuit, under the 11th Circuit's interpretation of the power of coalition districts under the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And also, because the map manipulates the redistricting process to disenfranchise minority voters for partisan gain. Under this map, as under the enacted map, a thirst for power trumps the rights of black voters who were discriminated against for centuries. These power plays are diluting black voices in Georgia. Is this really how Georgia today chooses to honor our courageous black leaders who fought to have what was already rightfully theirs, but that which they weren't given, which was the right to cast a ballot and have it count equally? The Republican priority is simply to preserve its own power, rather than uphold a basic and sacred tenet of our democracy, that every citizen's vote and voice matters and must count equally regardless of race. And you don't have to take my word for it. The Atlanta Journal-Constitution's headline this morning reads, "Georgia GOP Sorts Voters to Keep Nine-to-Five Advantage." Sorts voters to keep nine-to-five advantage. And noted redistricting expert, Professor Charles Bullock at the University of Georgia, told the paper that we seem to be, quote, "going down the Alabama path," meaning a Republican majority defying a federal court's order that every citizen's vote should count equally in Georgia. Let's get into a few specifics, legal specifics. This proposed map violates the Voting Rights Act by dismantling two majority-minority coalition districts. A coalition district is a district where more than one minority group satisfies the Jingles factors. That is, the groups form a multiracial group that can demonstrate that it is sufficiently large and geographically compact enough to constitute a majority in a single-member district. This is factor one of the constitutional tests laid out by the Supreme Court in the Jingles- Jingles versus Thornburg case that analyzes when a majority-minority district should be Second, the groups must be able to show that they are politically cohesive. Third, they are required to prove that the white majority votes sufficiently as a block to enable it to usually defeat the minority's preferred candidates. The controlling appellate court here in Georgia, the 11th Circuit, found in Concerned Citizens versus Hardy County that, and I quote, "two minority groups may be a single section-two minority if they can establish that they behave in a politically cohesive manner." Importantly, in the court's order, Judge Jones on page 509 stated, "The state cannot remedy the Section 2 violations described herein by eliminating minority-opportunity districts elsewhere in the plans." But in this plan, District 81 in DeKalb County is gone. This district, as well as House District 105 based in Gwinnett County, allowed black and Hispanic, in the case of District 81, and black, Hispanic, and Asian voters, in the case of District 105, to work together to elect candidates of their choice. But there's another problem with this map, aside from its violations of the Voting Rights Act and Judge Jones's order, and that is the scourge of partisan gerrymandering. You see, the consequences of redistricting extend far beyond securing partisan power. Those who wield control over the redistricting process often design districts to be as safe as possible, that is, districts that are either reliably Republican or reliably Democratic. By creating districts where party control is all but assured, the importance of the general election, which I will remind you is the actual election, in which citizens of all parties vote, the importance of it is diminished, and the primary elections become the deciding factor. Well, what's wrong with that? Primary voters tend to be committed partisans with views that are either further to the right or further to the left of the general population. In a system where representation is decided by primary elections, elected officials are incentivized to respond to the views of their base, i.e., their primary voters, rather than the entirety of their district. In fact, many elected officials will legislate, and we've all seen it, for the sole purpose of warding off primary challengers from the right or the left, ignoring the opinions and views of the broad-middle 70% of the electorate. Legislation responsive to the views of the broad majority of the electorate evaporates. Gerrymandering, whether it is racial or partisan, is therefore deeply undemocratic and un-American because it undermines the principles of fair representation and distorts the democratic process. The distortion of electoral outcomes, such as a congressional map that creates nine Republican and five Democratic districts in a 50-50 swing state that elected a Democratic president and two Democratic United States senators in back-to-back elections, erodes the confidence of Georgia voters and of American voters. It undermines the foundational democratic principle of one person, one vote. It fosters greater polarization and partisanship, and the real problem with that is that it ultimately makes us a weaker nation because we cannot solve the problems that the American electorate wants us to address because no one is paying attention to the views of the middle 70% of the electorate. Why are people so disgusted by our political process? I would suggest to you that this, gerrymandering, is one of the main reasons. It fosters a system that will not, does not, and cannot respond to their needs, solve problems, and ensure that America remains a strong country and a beacon for the world. It is really sad, extremely depressing, to see how the Republican Party, the party of Abraham Lincoln, who freed the slaves, has become the party of Trump, the party of election, denialism, and insurrection, the party of racial discrimination, and gerrymandering. I hope, because I know there are very many good people here who do not believe in those things on the Republican side of the aisle, and how do I know that? Because I know you personally, and I can watch what you do, and I watch what you work on. I'm not trying to say all of you yourselves are those people, but you know that's where the party is, and that's where the base is, and you've still got to do something about I hope you work to expel the anti-democracy authoritarian faction of your party and recognize that the future of America is a multiracial democracy and that the Republican Party cannot survive without also becoming a multiracial party in a way that it simply currently is not. And in a two-party system, we should all welcome the competition of ideas to see who can best serve the people and perfect our union by ensuring the promise of freedom, equality, and justice for every American. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to answer any questions or to yield the well if there are none.
You do have a question. Senator from the 37th. Does Lady Yew?
Of course, to my friend from Cobb.
I revel the fact that the Republican Party is increasingly becoming a multiracial party, broadening itself because of our ideas, and sadly, the wild and crazy ideas of the...
Is there a question, Mr. Senator from the 37th? Thank you, friend.
Some people want to say that you talked about the securing partisan power and the idea that minority coalitions behave in a politically cohesive manner. Is that not just capital speak for you telling folks you want to be able to aggregate power for your party, that behaving in a politically cohesive manner is just a veiled way of saying you're trying to achieve a partisan objective where we're trying to create fair, balanced maps that follow the order of the court?
I disagree that you're trying to create fair and balanced districts to meet the court's order, A. But B, that is a great question, and many people interpret a discussion of coalition or opportunity districts that way. It is not so, though, because in order for the coalition groups to meet any kind of Voting Rights Act claim, they have to satisfy each one of the Jingles factors.
Yeah, I just, I ask the question as I close, Mr. President. My home state of South Carolina elected an African-American United States senator that had nothing to do with Democrat power-grabbing and coalitions. I think it's a false premise, and again, I'd certainly have great respect for the lady from the 42nd, but I think let's get past this veiled effort to try to create partisan objectives and pass fair maps that follow what the court has ordered. I think we can be proud. That's what this proposition does.
You have another further question, Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Thank you. Senator from the 15th, you're on deck if you so choose, or you want to wave. Dean of the Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise to comment on the maps of the House and of the congressional maps as well. Last month, Judge Jones issued a 516-page order. Let me repeat a 516-page order finding that the 2021 district maps discriminated against black voters and violated the Voting Rights Act. None of the maps proposed by our Republican colleagues follow the court's directives, and no amount of smoke and mirrors hide the truth. Black voting power has been diluted by these maps, just as they were in 2021. These proposals do little, if anything, to improve the ability of black voters to elect candidates of their choice. Yes, there is a technically new majority-black district added, but at the expense of a substantial number of black voters whose votes were diluted, and we continue to be in a constant loop of redistricting, where one constant is the disenfranchisement of black voters. This may sound like a clerical issue to many people, but it is far more than that. The right to vote was not just given to us, we also fought for it. The Voting Rights Act is only 58 years old. 58 years. That's a good contingent of us in this chamber now that were around before the Voting Rights Act was a thing. We fought for it, we died for it, and here we are, less than 60 years later, still fighting for fair and equal representation. How long are we going to have to wrestle with this to be considered equal parts of this election process? And how are we supposed to say every vote counts and mean it when the majority party isn't even trying to hide what they're trying to discount? To add injury to insult, these maps eliminate a current majority-opportunity district where there is currently a seat of a black woman incumbent, one that has already been shuffled around like a chess piece. They are playing games while we are pleading for the rights of black voters. We are trying to get fair maps so we can work for the constituents, the constituents, the voters who chose us, and they could very well choose you if we allow them fair representation. Think about that. Fair representation means everybody should have a fair chance and indeed a focusing on the district that Judge Jones specifically identified in his order. The majority has significantly redrawn Atlanta metro districts. This not only ignores the task at hand, which, to be clear, is fair maps, it also causes confusion. Black voters, people like me, make up almost one-third of Georgia's eligible voting population. We are your colleagues, your friends, your doctors, your teachers, and your family members, and as we deserve to feel and to know that our representatives reflect who we are as people and what we stand for as this great community. We deserve to be heard and listened to. We ask for fair and equal representation. Decades before the Voting Rights Act was passed, and here we are, almost six decades later, as I said, still asking for fair representation. When? When will the powers that be see us as equal in this political process? We deserve fair maps, and one day we'll achieve that. Prayerfully, it's come sooner rather than later. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? Chair hears none. Is there objection to the previous question being answered? Chair hears none, the previous question is ordered. Would the minority leader like to speak? I think you addressed it in your... She's waving it? Just wave, okay. And then the author of the bill from the 50th, would you like to close debate, or you wave that? You waved that, too. Is there objection to agreements of the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? Chair hears none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? Chair hears none, the main question is ordered. Question is on the passes of the bill. All those in favor of the bill will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machines. On the passage of the bill, the yays are 32 and the nays are 21. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. All right, we're going to take a little five-minute break, just stand at ease, five minutes later, everybody stretch their legs, and then we'll reconvene here in a second to go over the next map. So I'm just giving everybody a break. Nothing else, Senator. So just stand at ease for about five minutes. No, nothing else, Senator, so, so just stand at ease for about five minutes. All right, the Senate will come back to order. Recognize, Secretary to read the caption.
Senate Bill 3 EX by Senator Echols of the 49th and others, a bill to be entitled, an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts, to provide for a short title, to provide for the contingent nature of this act, and the circumstances under which it shall or shall not apply according to the enforceability of prior provisions under federal law, to provide for the continuation of present members of the United States House of Representatives, to provide for effective date, to provide, to repeal conflicting laws, and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting recommends this bill due passed by substitute, respectfully submitted, Senator Echols of the 49th District Chair. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting offers the following substitute to Senate Bill 3 EX, a bill to be entitled, an act, to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts, to provide for a short title, to provide for the contingent nature of this act, to, and for circumstances under which it shall or shall not apply according to the enforceability and for other purposes. Mr. President, a minority report has been filed. Mr. President, that completes the order.
Thank you, Secretary. Recognize the senator from the 49th, speak to the measure.
Mr. President, thank you. Colleagues, I am here today to present to you Senate Bill 3 EX. If passed, this will set a new set of congressional maps as prescribed by Judge Jones. This congressional plan is a product that began with carefully reviewing Judge Jones' order. The order was very specific about what needs to be done for Congress, and I'll quote from page 509, "The remedy involves an additional majority-black congressional district in West Metro Atlanta. We consulted with legal counsel and then began drawing districts with Gina Wright in her office. We relied on Mrs. Wright's extensive knowledge of Georgia as we put these districts together. We first drew the new majority-black district required by the court order. That district is six on your map, and you have all of these in front of you. This district is very similar to the proposed District Six in the Pendergrass case, which is the congressional district litigation. The plaintiffs' expert in that case included portions of Fayette, Fulton, Douglas, and Cobb counties in the district, and we have covered basically the same area. We've also moved the portion of southwest Cobb County that was in District 14 into the new District Six. To be clear, we did not eliminate any existing majority-black seats in drawing this district, so District Six is in fact a new majority-black congressional district. We then had to begin making changes around that district. The proposed congressional plan involves changes to nine districts, all in North Georgia. Districts 1, 2, 3, 8, and 12 were not changed. All changes happened within that North Georgia area. After drawing the new majority-black district required by the court order, we then followed our existing traditional redistricting principles to work on the remaining districts, which included maintaining district populations so they're exactly the same, plus or minus one person, which is tighter than what's allowed on legislative plans, so we comply with the U.S. Constitution requirements of one person, one vote, limiting additional split counties as much as possible, drawing the new districts utilizing the most recent precincts from county governments, ensuring all districts are contiguous, ensuring all districts are reasonably compact in shape, ensuring communities of interest are protected as far as possible. Another goal was to ensure that the existing partisan balance of the congressional plan remained the same, so we maintain the continuity of representation as much as possible. To do that, we utilized election return data from 2018, 2020, and 2022 that had been allocated on the plan to understand the partisan impact of this plan, which remains the same political balance as it was in 2021. Now I'll go in and talk about the different districts. Congressional District Six. As I already referenced, Congressional District Six is the new majority-black district and has an any-part-black voting age population percentage of 51.75 percent. It is located in the same location as the plaintiff's expert district in the congressional case. It includes the same highways and healthcare systems Judge Jones relied on at pages 325 and 326 of his order. The district includes part of the city of South Fulton and moves north into Ostel, areas that the judge found to share strong connections on pages 190 and 191. The district connects a number of suburbs around Metro Atlanta that are all experiencing growth and are diverse communities. Congressional District Five. Moving to the east, Congressional District Five shifted east to accommodate the new majority-black district. This district remains centered on the city of Atlanta, and it includes the airport, as it has historically been for a number of decades now. It has strong connections between Atlanta and its suburbs, and is a relatively complex, compact shape as it was on the 2021 plan. In the process of drawing this district, its black VAP increased to 51.06 percent. Congressional District Four. Congressional District Four also shifted east to accommodated, to accommodate the new majority-black district. It retains a strong connection with I-285 and I-85 along the eastern side of Atlanta, and has moved out of the farther eastern suburbs it previously had to track up I-85 and take in the Buford Highway Corridor. It includes Dunwoody, Stonecrest, Norcross, Duluth, Shambly, and Dorville, all suburban Atlanta communities that are growing and share a number of similar entry, issues and interests. In the process of draw, drawing this district, its black VAP decreased from just over 52 percent to 50.59 percent, but we do not believe that decrease will affect its political performance. Congressional District 13. Because District Six had to make, take so much of existing Congressional District 13's territory to accommodate the required new majority-black district, this district shifted significantly to the east. Notably, the plaintiff's expert had also shifted District 13 to the east, but had it included a number of additional rural counties that did not fit as well with the Metro Atlanta suburban character of District 13. We have drawn a better District 13 that begins with the portions of Clayton and Henry that had previously been in District 13 and stays in the Atlanta suburbs by taking in all of Rockdale and part of Newton Counties, along with a significant portion of Gwinnett County. This configuration enables us to keep the district anchored in Metro Atlanta instead of sending it far to the east in rural areas. This configuration also keeps Conyers, Snellville, and Lilburn Hole, all of which are suburban cities with significant shared interests given their proximity to Atlanta. In drawing District 13, its black VAP decreased significantly, but it remains a majority-black district at 51.45 percent. Let me pause there for a minute and just be clear. This plan increases the number of majority-black districts from the prior plan based on the numbers, and it adds the required majority-black district in Metro Atlanta as required by Judge Jones. This plan includes four majority-black districts, which is about 29 percent of the districts in the state. Moving to the other districts that were affected, you can see the ripple effects of these changes. Congressional District 14. District 14 shifts north in Cobb County after removing the territory that was added to the new majority-black district and maintains its general shape, not crossing the mountains at the north part of the district as the plaintiff's expert had done, but instead maintaining the western character of the district. Congressional District 11. District 11 also changes its split of Cobb to accommodate the new district and takes in Gordon County from District 14. In order to ease the burden on election officials, the split of Cherokee County that was previously in place remains the same. Congressional District 7. With all of the shifting in Metro Atlanta and with the wrapping of District 13 into Gwinnett County to maintain its Metro Atlanta-focused district, District 7 shifts significantly north to encompass much of the territory previously in District 6. It includes North Fulton and moves up to Lumpkin County. As I indicated, the split of Cherokee County is the same as the previous map, and the split of Hall County recognizes an important community of interest around Lake Lanier. The Forsyth-Hall border is the lake, and people on both sides often share similar interests. Hall is my home county, and so under this plan, the Speaker's home county and my home county have both been split. Congressional District 9. District 9 retains much of its prior character as a mountain-focused district and puts Jackson County back in the district, which is Congressman Clyde's home county. Because of the need for population after adjusting for the new District 7 boundaries, it includes portions of northern Gwinnett County like it did previously, but on a slightly different boundary. Gwinnett County was split three ways previously, but is now split four ways because it's a large county, and a lot of the population changes ended up landing in that area. Congressional District 10. This district shifts to accommodate the changes around it as well. Its boundaries in Henry and Newton do not change, but it adds a portion of Gwinnett and takes in Franklin and Hart to account for Jackson going into the ninth. This district retains its eastern Georgia character, and election officials will not need to worry about changes on its southern or western sides because of those boundaries have not been changed. As with the legislative plans, we took Mrs. Wright's expertise into account when creating this plan. We also took into account the work on county election officials who have to update the voter registration database. By drawing the map this way, we were working to minimize the amount of work required before the 2024 elections where we can. This plan also does not eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts. Judge Jones was clear on page 510 of the order that we cannot eliminate any existing minority-opportunity districts in drawing the new majority-black districts. While he doesn't define that term, it's clear he's referencing to existing majority-black districts. On page 511, he refers to whether the congressional plan provides black voters with additional opportunity districts. There are also references to opportunity districts that clearly refer to black voters on page 106, 145, and 146, 211, 268, 417 through 20, and 427. Further, in the context of Section 2, a minority-opportunity district must be a district where a single racial group is a majority. This congressional plan does not eliminate any existing majority-black districts. Instead, it takes a district that is not a majority-black district and shifts it north where it remains a non-majority-black district. To be clear, the Voting Rights Act protects distinct racial groups, not coalitions of voters. District 7 was not a majority-black district on the 21 plan, and it is not a majority-black district on this plan, so there's no concern about eliminating a minority-opportunity district. Finally, like the legislative plans, it's important to remember that we believe our 2021 congressional plan complies with the Voting Rights Act and are pursuing an appeal of the judge's order. That's why you'll see language in this bill that reverts to the 21 plan if the appeal is successful. This mirrors the language used by the Democratic majority in 2002 when the state senate plan was not pre-cleared in time to use for that election. But if anyone's upset with how a district is configured, remember that we did not draw these districts this way in 21 originally, and we did not want to redraw these districts now. We're doing this because we were sued by democratically affiliated groups. This was also the only congressional map that was presented to the reapportionment and redistricting committee as well. And, Mr. President, I will yield for questions.
You have no questions, Senator, unless Senator from 27th, you, you have your light on the speak, correct? Okay. You have no questions, Senator.
Okay, thank you.
Recognize Senator from the 27th, speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I want to commend the senator from the 49th for the work that she has done getting us to this point. She has brought us a map today that represents the communities of interest in the state of Georgia. And even though it wasn't offered in committee, there is a Democrat map, it's posted on the reapportionment section of the website as the Senate Democratic Caucus plan. But nobody from the Democrat Caucus deemed the map worthy of bringing forward for consideration. So through this entire process... So through this entire process, we have had one map to consider. Today, I'd like to unpack a couple of distinctions between these two maps. I'm thinking of this in my own head as a tale of two maps or a tale of two plans, because they are very different. The plan from Chair Echols ensures the communities of interest are protected. The Democrat Plan, if we can call it that, even though they were perhaps, for whatever reason, too embarrassed to bring it forward, was drawn by Mr. Cooper in the legislative process. I don't know a Mr. Cooper in this room, so I had to do a little bit of research, and I discovered that Mr. Cooper, the man who drew the Democrat Plan, is from Virginia. And he admitted, in the case, that he didn't know much about Georgia and the communities of interest of Georgia. He simply looked at Georgia District Six and did his best to meet population equality. Didn't look at Georgia as a whole, didn't look at the statewide communities of interest from the mountains to the coast like the chairman did. He looked at Georgia District Sixth and considered his work done. And that is the map that the elected Democrat senators from the state of Georgia put forward as their plan, a plan drawn by a man from Virginia. The chairman's map ensures that George, Georgia communities are protected. Unlike the plan from Virginia, it does not place Hancock County into the same district as the northeast Georgia mountains. Unlike the plan from Virginia, it does not cross the mountain range in the north part of the state, but maintains that line between Districts 14 and 19. Unlike the plan from Virginia, doesn't extend District 13 into Jasper County, which, as we all know, is very far from metro Atlanta. In, in committee, we heard some complaint from the Democrats that Cobb County is now split three ways. Who else split Cobb County three ways? The man from Virginia, who the Democrats have signed off on his plan. Their plan uses this almost illogical split of Fayette County and takes just a small number of people out instead of using the existing boundaries. The Democrats chose to rely on the plaintiff's expert instead of using their own knowledge of the state of Georgia and their own knowledge of the people that they represent. They chose to ignore the expert availability of the expertise of Gina Wright, who we all have had the opportunity, an open door to her office, to have a map drawn. So I, I begin to ask myself, why? Why didn't the Democrats bring forth the plan? We have a deadline from a judge of Friday to redrawn these maps, and we had one party bring a map forward. And I'm going to ask the question out loud because I don't know that it's true or not, but it causes me to wonder, do the elected senators of the state of Georgia, each representing about 200,000 people, is it their plan to just let a judge redraw the map? A judge who none of their constituents know, who none of their constituents voted for? But today, we're going to see a lot of red on the board from the Democrats, probably from all of the Democrats if the precedent is going to follow through. And a no vote today is not a vote for a plan that was put forward in committee. A no vote today is to abdicate our responsibility under Georgia law to redraw these maps and to outsource them to a man from Virginia. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Senators yielded. I recognize the Senator from the 39th. Senator from the 39th. Senator from the 6th, are you ready? Are you ready? Since... I waved, then I recognize Senator from 6th, then, yeah, right now.
Good morning, colleagues. I rise to speak against the proposed map in SB 3 EX. And to reiterate what my colleagues have been saying throughout this process, this map not only fails to meet the court's order, but it furthers this body's history of the majority party trying to desperately hold on to power to the detriment of the people of Georgia. In this instance, this map negatively impacts black voters and other voters of color at a moment when a federal judge asked us to empower voters, not to further dilute their power. So I ask this body, have you done everything you could to ensure that black voters and other voters of color, who make up more than one-third of the voting population of this state? Have you given every opportunity possible for votes to be cast that are equal to every other voter across this state? One person, one vote. Have you, as a body, respected the fact that the federal judge, who is universally respected and was approved by the US Senate unanimously, has said that voters of color, especially the black voters in Georgia, have been harmed by a violation of Section Two of the Voting Rights Act? The answer is no. This body has chosen to support maps that put party ahead of people. These maps put party ahead of the people of Georgia. It's frustrating and disappointing that the majority of this body would put their political interests ahead of the interests of the political power of black Georgians and other Georgians of color. And what also saddens me is that the majority party in this chamber continues to impose on its residents of the state maps that are heavily gerr, gerrymandered and are not representative of the diversity and the beauty of this great state. And here's the thing, you are only making it harder on yourselves by drawing maps the way you have drawn them. You are making the politics in this state more extreme, more toxic, forcing yourselves to take more extreme positions. You've already seen the dysfunction in Washington, in Congress. In fact, some of you can't stand your congresspeople because of how extreme they are and how unwilling they are to actually do work for the American people. Similarly, in this chamber, I've seen some of you sweat over the votes that you've had to take because of the threat of a primary challenge from someone more extreme. Yet here you are, supporting maps that continue the status quo for the sta, for the sake of maintaining your power. You know, Mr. President, I was mistaken when I assumed many years ago that Republicans were for competition, that Republicans were for not picking winners and losers, because clearly this map and other maps do the complete opposite. Instead of competitive districts, this map reduces the number of them, just like the other ones. Y'all, we should be opposed to these kinds of political tactics, and we should be supporting maps that allow our values and our ideas to compete fairly in the ballot box. Because if you're so confident about the political positions that you take, then you'd be okay with having those values and those beliefs and those ideas compete fairly in the ballot box. It's curious, because I heard a colleague of mine speak just a few minutes ago about the great gains that Republicans have made with voters of color. Yet look at what this map does to the most diverse county in this state, Gwinnett County. There is literally no other county on this map that is divided in more ways than y'all divided Gwinnett County. Why? What are you afraid of? I think we know what the reality is. So I'll end with this. I know that the desire here is to maintain power by the majority party, slow the pace of change that you are seeing on the ground across the state. But here's the thing, y'all, you can't stop the change that has been and is coming to Georgia. Democrats will become a majority in this legis, legislature. They will take back offices across this state. It might be in a few years. It'll definitely be by, be by the time that my son is able to sit in this chamber. But know this, when we do, I can assure you that fair maps will be a priority and things will finally change. Because I've heard y'all say before, and y'all reminded us before, that 20 years ago, Democrats did the same thing. Well, clearly, it's going to be on Democrats to change that precedence. And I, for one, will be a Democrat that will be advocating for something that the chancellor and former governor Purdue proposed when he was governor, an independent body to do this line drawing, so that we can save ourselves from the time, from the stress of drawing new lines and actually give a voice to every single Georgian. One person, one vote. Colleagues, I urge you to vote against these maps and support fair maps that give every single Georgian equal power in the voting booth. I'm asking you to support competition, and I'm asking you to put people ahead of party and vote no on SB 3 EX. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize Senator from 39th.
The Voting Rights Act was not just a legislative milestone. It was a promise, a promise that every citizen, regardless of their background, would have an equal and unobstructed opportunity to participate in the democratic process. Yet here we are, nearly 60 years later, grappling with districts drawn not to empower, but to dilute the power of certain communities, including my community, black voters. The map that passed in 2021 and the one before us today carry the echoes of historical injustice. The lines etched on these documents don't just represent geographic boundaries, they represent the barriers that have been erected to stifle the voices of black citizens. The recent court ruling rightly recognizes this injustice, declaring that the current 2021 maps dilute black voting power, a stark violation of the very essence of the Voting Rights Act. The judge went on to very clearly provide guidance on how and where to remedy this dilution. And the court could not have been more clear, the state is not permitted to try to bring the maps into compliance with the Voting Rights Act by eliminating a district that is already a minority-opportunity district. But what does that mean? What is a minority-opportunity district? Although it was always clear to Democrats that this phrase simply meant a district in which the minority population had an opportunity to cast meaningful votes and elect a candidate of their choosing, I can tell you that Republicans have publicly and repeatedly stated that an opportunity district is a majority-black district, which doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense generally, and it doesn't make sense in the context of the judge's order. A minority-opportunity district is one in which multiple minority groups, with an S, have an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choosing. Republicans have the burden of bringing these maps into compliance with the Voting Rights Act because they are the majority party, and there's no evidence that they've looked to other decisions within the 11th Circuit to determine what legally constituted a minority-opportunity district. Instead, they created their own definition, one that benefited them. They accepted a definition that exists in no dictionary and no reported case. In committee, reporting, Republicans stated that minority opportu, opportunity district means a district in which a single racial group is majority. Those are their words, reflective of the position of the Republican committee members, but that is not what the 11th Circuit has said. In Concerned Citizens of Hardy County versus Hardy County Board of Commissioners, the 11th Circuit stated that two minority groups may be a single Section Two minority if they can establish that they behave in a politically cohesive manner, on Page 526. The Republican definition does not comport with this. It makes sense, though, that the Republicans would adopt this definition because it's being used to their benefit, and they use this definition to destroy Congressional District Seven. This Republican map separates voters from the current Congressional District Seven in order to create a new, different majority-black district, from having 67% black voters down to having 33%. That violates the court's order, period, and that's not how this is supposed to go. I would implore the Republicans' constituents to ask them why they've accepted this definition of minority opportu, opportunity district and why they think it's going to pass muster under Judge Jones's scrutiny, which everyone we know from both sides of the aisle trusts. Gerrymandered districts with their contorted shapes and strategic dispersment of voters undermine the principle of fair representation. The intent is clear, to manipulate the electoral landscape, to fragment communities, and to dilute the collective strength of those whose voices have historically been marginalized. Our duty here is not just to correct the maps, but to also uphold the spirit of the Voting Rights Act, making sure that every vote matters. The path forward demands a collective dedication to rectifying the wrongs of gerrymandering, ensuring that every voice is heard, and that every vote truly counts. By voting no on this map, we have a chance, right here, right now, to make a real difference for Georgians, to make sure that each of their votes is not only counted, but that it counts in a meaningful way. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize the Senator from 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo many of the sentiments from my fellow senator from the 39th. Last week, I stood before this body and spoke about how the right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy. I spoke about the long and shameful legacy we have in Georgia of stripping away the rights of black voters and how we must not repeat the sins of the past. And I'm disappointed to say that I must stand before you once again and denounce yet another addition to a racist legacy. The former 7th district has essentially been re proportioned into three districts, my congressional district. The part of the district with the largest population of Hispanic voters has been drawn into the 4th. The southern and central parts, including Grayson, Lilburn, and East Loganville, have been placed in the 14th, and the eastern portions have been drawn into the 10th district. My colleagues on the other side of the aisle have proposed congressional district maps that would create a new black majority district by eliminating a minority-opportunity district. I know your party doesn't have a lot of minorities, but I want to remind you that Asians and Hispanics are minorities. I am a minority. And in the federal judge's order that brought us into this special session, the judge explicitly said they could not do that. This leads me to believe that either the party of law and order didn't read the judge's instructions, or they simply are choosing to ignore them. Unfortunately, the second of these two options is more likely. My Republican colleagues would rather show contempt for the rule of law than comply with the federal judge's order. They prefer to undermine the systems of checks and balances enshrined in our constitution, a document they claim to revere and respect, rather than threaten their politically gerrymandered majority. By proposing these maps, my colleagues are choosing to continue diluting the power, black voters, of black voters and violate a judge's order. It is the 21st century, folks. We're supposed to have abandoned Jim Crow, but some continue to insist that we have a seat at the table. Thank you. I yield the well.
Senator has yielded well. Senator from the 35th, would you like to speak from your chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to address this issue from my seat today. And I thank you, everyone, for listening. Because I sit here today to talk about Congressional District 13. A district that I ran in many years ago and got 46% of the vote, could never do it now. You see, Judge Jones made clear in his order that a new black-majority district should be created and part out of this district. Does the Republican map do that? I say no. No, Republicans dismantle current District 7, a minority-opportunity district. They move District 13, a black-majority district, and put part of Congressional District 7 in a new District 13. This is an illusion. Judge Jones asked us to create a new black-majority congressional district. He said we could not get rid of opportunity districts to create that new district. But that's exactly what the majority asks us to do. Black voters were packed into the Congressional District 13. Judge Jones made that clear. But our job was to unpack those and other black voters and empower black voters unlike the 2021 map did. Instead, we take away that black-majority district. We get rid of minority-opportunity districts. We pack 1,500,000 voters of color into four opportunity districts. These voters will not have a new opportunity to select candidates of their choice. These maps truly fail the voters of Congressional District 13 and Congressional District 7. They fail all black voters. They fail to comply with Judge Jones's order. Privileges may apply. Pursuit to those rights and privileges immediately. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize Senator from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief to go through this because I actually believe we're making a pretty simple situation kind of complicated. As we go through it, we will be talking about the illustrative map, or the illustrative map that was Mr. Cooper basically drew up, who is from Virginia. But I would make note that he was also deemed credible by the court, unlike defense expert, which had already been said in prior cases was not credible, that his testimony was not credible, not only about the part, about certain sections of his testimony was not credible, but all of his testimony is not credible. So I'll take Virginia over a non-credible expert. So when we start going to the illustrative CD 6, certain points start to kind of come out, which is important when the court talks about this. We look at on page 198, the court says, "The court has already determined that there is record evidence that the minority population in illustrative CD 6 is sufficiently compact", which is important, of course, for gingles that everyone talks about. "As stated above, the court finds that Mr. Cooper's illustrative congressional plans, both in the preliminary injunction hearing and the trial, prove it as possible to draw an additional majority-black congressional district in West Metro Atlanta." Goes on to say then, "Illustrative congressional plan leaves 75% of the enacted plan intact, so the plan that we had already passed was still intact, 75%," which, of course, is also key. And then the court, on page 199, goes on and says that, "Furthermore, Mr. Cooper testified that he used the General Assembly's guidelines to inform his decisions when drawing the illustrative congressional plan. Thus, the court finds that the General Assembly could implement this congressional plan because Mr. Cooper used the legislative guidelines." So that tells us something. It tells us that the court has given us a roadmap of where we want to go in this particular case. And that roadmap, that where we ought to go, creates five black-majority black districts, but it also keeps one of what we call the crossover or coalition district or minority-opportunity district. This is what the court plan basically already is, when we say we're following the judge's order. Well, within his order, he basically gives you the guideline and says, "This is a good plan. It fits the gingles proposition, but it also goes according to the General Assembly's Senate rules." He couldn't be more clear. Thus, the court finds that the General Assembly could implement the illustrative congressional plan because he has used the legislative guidelines. So he has given us the plan already. And within that plan is five majority-black districts and the one minority-opportunity district, the one coalition district, the one crossover district, and those terms basically are actually used interchangeably. Because even though we're given pages to go to, it's not really that accurate. When you go to those various pages within the order, some of those things that talk about opportunity districts are not his words, they're experts who are saying certain things. And then other times, he's just using the word "opportunity" as such, but never really defining "opportunity district." But we know from case law that opportunity district has various potential meanings, because it kind of goes back and forth. So it can be majority-opportunity district, I mean minority-opportunity district, where you have majority-minority, so you have majority-blacks. It can be what's called a crossover district, where you actually have blacks who team together with whites, and they are able to elect the person of the choice of the minority. Or it could also be called a coalition district, where you have two minorities actually come together, black and another minority, or multiple minorities come together, and they actually elect the persons of their choice. However you wanted to find that term, we'll allow the experts as they go back to court to kind of battle that out. But we do know this. The court has said, "This is your roadmap." Within that roadmap is CD 7, which is a minority-opportunity district, however you want to couch it. You can couch it as a coalition district, crossover district, minority-opportunity. It doesn't change at all. The district does not change, so we know that's the district that he's talking about. And so here we have our situation. So our situation is, we're supposed to make a determination now, okay? We have this minority-opportunity district. We're not actually sure, supposedly not sure what the judge is saying. Now just think about this from just a logic standpoint. The judge has given us this guideline. It has this minority-opportunity district in there, however you want to couch it. It's there. In his guideline, it's five majority-black districts with this one district, which is obviously going to be a minority-opportunity district, however you couch it. He's told you, "This is your guideline," basically. And we say, "Well, we're not really sure what it means by minority-opportunity district. It could mean a coalition district. Well, it could mean a crossover district." But we know we have this District 7 here that fits regardless. And this is a judge's order. So since we're not really sure what he means, this is what we're going to do. Let's just eliminate the one thing that he's probably talking about as far as being an opportunity district. That's no logical sense. He's telling you, "This is your map. This is what you go by. This is your guardrail. This is your roadmap." And you're sitting there, you're seeing it, and you're saying, "Well, I'm not really sure if he means coalition district or crossover district, but I know it exists because I'm looking at this District 7. I see that there's, however you want to couch it, it exists. Well, let's just eliminate it." That'll follow his order. That'll follow his order. Makes absolutely no sense. But it actually goes further than that. Because these are not just my words when we start talking about minority-opportunity districts and things of that nature, but also the Supreme Court words as far as these districts are concerned. And that's where it becomes important. Because the Supreme Court says, in Barrett versus Strickland, the court actually says this about these crossover districts. "These districts," this is the court talking, Barrett versus Strickland, 2009 Supreme Court case, "these districts may serve to diminish the significance and influence of race by encouraging minority and majority voters to work together towards a common goal." They go on and say this about these crossover districts. "The option to draw such districts gives legislators a choice that can lead them to where racial isolation actually goes away." So everybody that talks about, "I don't want to see race, and I don't see race," that's what a crossover district is. That's what you're about to eliminate. This is coming from the Supreme Court. They also go on to say this. "States can, and in proper cases, should defend against alleged Section 2 violations by pointing to crossover voting patterns and to effective crossover districts." So everyone wants to say, "I don't see race. Race don't play a part in this." The Supreme Court is telling you, "You could defend yourself by making sure these crossover districts continue." And you're saying today, "We don't want to do that. We want to eliminate it." And then the real kicker, because they go on. "And if there was a showing that a state intentionally drew district lines in order to destroy otherwise effective crossover districts, that would raise serious questions under both the 14th and 15th amendments." And that's what you guys are doing today. Opportunity to do exactly what the Supreme Court said. They're telling you, "Crossover districts actually eliminate all this racial tension." It puts it aside to some extent. This is what the court's saying, this ain't me. They're telling you, "You could actually defend yourself in court by saying, 'No, look at these crossover districts that we have.'" And then the court then goes on to say, "But an unnecessary elimination of these districts actually shows a potential violation." And that's exactly where we are. Because we've eliminated this crossover or opportunity district, or however it may be. And so we then go to the last section in our Senate factors, when we start talking about gingles and things of that nature. And it says that liability turns on the unique factual circumstances of each case and the totality of the circumstances in that particular jurisdiction. The totality of circumstances in that jurisdiction. Here's our totality of circumstances in Georgia. Reconstruction ends 1877, poll taxes are enacted. 1900, the Democratic Party created all-white primaries. Make sure you understand it wasn't Democratic primaries, it was all-white primaries. 1908, African-Americans are starting to try to find themselves in the workforce. Constitutional amendment passed in Georgia to further codify those primaries. 1958, you have the start of the Civil Rights Movement. What happens? Literacy tests are then created. 1957, Turner County is the first county in the United States to be sued under the Civil Rights Act of 1957. As the Civil Rights Act continues to increase, 1961, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights reported that many rural counties in Georgia have no suffrage at all. Blacks have no suffrage at all. As the Civil Rights Movement continues, 1965, Georgia's included in Section 5 pre-clearance. From 1965 to 2002, as the Civil Rights Act has continued and as African-Americans have become more part of the system, we actually find out that Georgia has actually had 1887 federal government interventions as far as voting is concerned and 91 Voting Rights Act objections. After 2012, U.S. Commission on Civil Rights determined that Georgia is the only state that had all five major categories of violations as far as voting rights were concerned. 2016, numbers started to get closer. What does Georgia do? We start instituting more strict, have the strictest registration deadlines on voting. 2017, African-Americans, once again, numbers started getting a little bit closer. We established the exact match. 2020, uh-oh, we actually have a breakthrough. What happens? SB 202. And now 2023. Faced with the possibility that African-Americans have become more participatory in the system by keeping a crossover district, a district that the Supreme Court says actually can defend you, a district that the Supreme Court actually says actually decreases racial tension. 2023, same crossroads so many legislators have had the opportunity to cross. African-American participation trying to continue. Do we, this legislative body, fail like so many legislative bodies? As I just went through, 1877, and I could have cited 20 more instances where that happened. And I won't sit up here and talk about Republican and Democrat, because it wasn't Republican and Democrat, it's race. It's an Republican and Democrat issue. Democrats were just, Democrats were just Democrats, that was just a label. You think the persons that they were terrorizing, the blacks they were terrorizing, kids, that they were Democrats? This is about fear. At some point in time, we got to get over it. Today would be that day. I just read from a conservative Supreme Court that says, "Those crossover districts actually help us with the racial issue." And it's right here in front of you. It's right here in front of us. And we could make a decision today, "Well, we're going to finally go forward on this issue." This ain't no Democrat or Republican issue, I'm tired of that. And I'll even disagree with my colleagues, talking about, "The Democrats going to take over it all?" It's not about that. It's about, "Are African-Americans going to continue to be part of this system? This America that we helped build?" That's what it's about. That's what it's about. There's no reason to fear us. I laughed the other day when we had that vote to find out if we support police. I was a prosecutor for 10 years. I now represent police. I do more than anybody in this building as far as representing police. When you hear about a police officer hitting somebody or doing whatever it is, and somebody files some frivolous lawsuit against them, I represent them. I don't have to prove myself that I support police. And African-Americans all over this country are doing the same thing on all sorts of levels. Today ain't about Democrat or Republican. Today is about if we're going to eliminate our fears. I pray that we will. Thank you, I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. I recognize the Senator from the 46th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, fellow senators, let me just sort of wrap this up a little bit for us, and there may be other speakers, but I want to set a few factors straight, and let's make sure we know what we're considering here. Our mission as the state senate is to follow Judge Jones's order. That's why we're having a special session, because he ordered us to either have a special session, and in the course of that, to redraw these maps to meet the conditions of his order, or to let him do it for us. And in his order, he made it clear that the preference and the legal precedents dictate that courts should allow legislatures to conduct this process through their elected representatives, that all the citizens of Georgia elected us to come here and reach agreement. And he made it clear that we had to draw an additional black district, black-majority district. And we've done it. There have been some references to Alabama, we're just like Alabama, et cetera. Well, we are not like Alabama. We got one guy in this whole senate that went to Alabama, and, you know, he is just pretty roundly ridiculed after he came and gave his silly little speech the other day about beating the dogs. Kudos to you, we're glad about that. Alabama had a case, a redistricting case, similar to ours. And they handled it completely differently than this legislature handled it. Alabama has about 25% of its population that's African-American, and they have seven congressional districts. Their legislature drew a map where they purportedly said, "We are going to take other considerations, communities of interest, and we're going to..." communities of interest, and we're going to disregard race in drawing our maps. And the result was, there was one majority African American district out of seven, significantly less than 25% of their population. And the courts in that state said, you are discriminating and violating Section Two. You need to create one more majority African American district. There needs to be two out of seven to be fair and comply with Section Two of the Voting Rights Act. They go back in their special session and redraw the maps, they reconfigure some communities of interest, but produced another map that still had one African American majority district out of the seven. So they essentially thumbed their nose at their district court and said, we think you're misinterpreting the law, and we're not even going to follow what you said, we're just going to let this go through the courts and we'll find out who's right and who's wrong. We are handling it totally different than Alabama. We took Judge Jones's instructions and we followed them. In this map, we created an additional majority black congressional district, and we did it in the exact geographic area he told us to do it. Now, there's an old legal maxim. When you got the facts on your side, you argue the facts. When you got the law on your side, you argue the law. When you don't have either, you just yell loudly and pound the table. And that's what we've seen for the last two days. Because in this case, the facts are on the side that back this map is legal and compliant with the order. And they're fair. The law is on our side. We are complying with the law and complying with Judge Jones's interpretation of the law that we don't even agree with. We are doing what he said to do. All of the arguments against this are partisan arguments, people angry because they want to change the partisan balance to increase the number of Democratic representatives in Congress for the state of Georgia. And I'll show you the facts. A lot of these facts are very much, almost just attached to the bill, the racial breakdowns. When we walked in this building last Wednesday, we had five African American congressmen from the state of Georgia. And that's more than a third of the 14 that we have. And we have a state with 31% African American population. We felt those 2021 plans were fair, as was reflected by the electoral outcomes of the When we drew those maps in 2021, there were four of the 14 districts that had a majority of the citizens in those districts were black. Two of them had majority of the black voting age population, which is really what counts the most. If you want to see what it takes to elect a candidate of your choice, that's the standard. Doesn't say how many Democrats you get, it doesn't say how many publicans you get, can you elect the candidate of your choice? Because of the history that's been recited here and the way we have behaved in Georgia, for whatever reasons, both parties agree that our voting patterns have been racially polarized. Black citizens are way more likely to vote for a black candidate, which would be their choice, and white citizens have historically been way more likely to vote for a white candidate. I don't agree with that. I don't think we ought to be judging candidates by the color of their skin. I'm more like Martin Luther King Jr., that it ought to be the content of their character and the policies that they are promoting to help all of Georgians. I do remain optimistic that we're getting there. And we're seeing things. As we are gradually evolving and changing and getting with the times, getting past all of this historical discrimination, we've made a little progress. They last renewed the Voting Rights Act and eliminated the requirement for Georgia to get pre-clearance. And maybe that's because after 1992, we've gotten more modern, more open-minded, less racist, less discriminatory. I point out that here we are in a state with 31% African Americans that has a United States senator elected by the majority of this state who is African American, Raphael Warnock. Well, how do we do that if we're so racist? In my party, in the Republican Party, Herschel Walker just won the primary for the United States Senate and cleaned the field of all kind of white candidates among these allegedly racist Republican voters. We're getting there. We're opening our minds, we're being less discriminatory. The facts are, on this new map, we went from having four districts that had majority black population to five. We went from two with majority black voting age population to four. We have four districts that more than 50% of the voting age population is African American. And if we are racially polarizing our voting, that guarantees that black citizens have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice and their color. We've done it, we've complied with Section Two, we've complied with the judge's order. There's one other district, which is District Two, Sanford Bishop, African American congressman for many years down there in southwest Georgia, that is slightly below 50% in black voting age population. In fact, by the data presented on the back of this map, it's 49.29%. That much below 50%. But it's proven by the election results that that district is capable of electing a candidate of choice for black Georgians. So we have five now. We have now, through this map, essentially guaranteed that there will be five going forward if our racially polarized voting patterns continue and blacks still choose candidates of their own race. The facts are the facts, that is pure mathematics. This has been complied with from what Judge Jones has required from the numerical advantages, percentages of blacks in their different districts that they hold a majority. Now let's talk briefly about the law. Number one, all of this conversation about partisan gerrymandering does not reflect any law. There is no statute that prohibits partisan gerrymandering. I criticized the Democratic Party the other day that their senate map proposal gave the same number of black seats that the Republican one did, but just gave a couple of more Democratic seats, and I said, that's partisan. Well, it wasn't illegal, good try, it's okay, there's no statute that says you can't do it, there's no Supreme Court decision, no precedent that says that that is illegal. So all of these arguments that y'all heard, people saying how wrong it is, et cetera, we don't have enough Democrats, that is not in violation of any law. What it does is make you, require you, to create districts that allow racial minorities to elect the candidate of their choice. And that is interpreted by the courts to mean a single race must be given an opportunity. There is no mention of these coalitions. So that's what we've heard, all this argument about these coalition districts, coalition districts, they're required to allow a minority to be elected by some grouping of numerous minorities. The district that everybody's whipped into frenzy about here today is District Seven. Because as we drew that district back in 2021, the majority of the residents within the boundaries were of some racial minority. It was less than 30% African Americans in that district. That is not a minority opportunity district. Even your own arguments have said that it needs to be 37% or more. So nobody has reduced a black minority opportunity district. And Judge Jones cannot be referring to a coalition district because that's not in the law, and that has not been accepted by the courts. There are 13 federal circuit courts of appeal. They're grouped geographically, we are in the 11th Circuit, and that makes up Alabama, Georgia, and Florida. And they've divided the country into regional districts. Here we are, however many years it's been since 1965, and there's only one out of those 13 circuits has ever said this applies to coalition minority opportunity districts. And that's the Fifth Circuit, and they have a case that said that. Want to make sure I've got the right notes. That case is Pettaway versus Galveston City. The three-judge panel in that court rendered an opinion that suggested that a coalition of multiple minorities, and in that case, it was African Americans and Hispanics, could form a coalition. After rendering their ruling, it has been reconsidered. There are more than three judges, I'm not sure how many, on a circuit court. The entire court is going to revisit that decision to decide whether they screwed up, basically. The Sixth Circuit is the only other circuit that we've had an appellate decision on, and they very clearly rejected this interpretation and said, coalition of multiple racial minorities to come up with a minority opportunity district is not what's contemplated by the Civil Rights Act. And that makes sense, because the Civil Rights Act was passed in response to the civil rights movement that was a movement by African Americans to receive fair treatment. And the Voting Rights Act specifically extended that to fair treatment in the electoral process. It was promoted, the legislative history was for black people. But the language holds for any racial minorities, and by the way, that includes white people. And white people out here in this room, pay attention, because you're about to be a minority. Right now in Georgia, there's 51% white citizens. And I assure you, by the next time there's a redistricting, you're not going to be over 50%. Every racial minority or racial group is going to be a minority. Watch and see. And then how are we going to interpret these laws? Now, that is not what Congress wanted to do, was to say, we're going to look at the populations of each state and guarantee that there's proportional representation in the elected bodies by whatever your percentage of the racial makeup is. It's give you an opportunity. Give you a fair chance to elect a person of your choice. Right now, that tends to be people of the same race. I'm with you, let's get beyond it, we need to. We are making progress to quit letting race be a primary or predominant factor, but all I can tell you is the facts are very clear. We have complied with the mandate and the law to create the additional majority minority district. We have five African American congresspeople, and this new map locks that in, guarantees that will continue in the future so long as we still have such racially polarized voting. And we have complied with the law, as we've described it. It is not such a thing as a coalition of racial minorities that are protected by this It's such a hard position to be in when you're trying to comply with the judge's order and create an additional majority black district without reducing black votes from somewhere else. You can't do it, you have to. And when you look at all the breakdown on this, very few changes, insignificant percentage of changes were made to any of these districts other than the creation of the new majority black district. Necessarily, some of the other majority black districts reduced their black percentages some degree, but are still in excess of 50%. What else can you do? I don't think we want to be in a position where we're required to create the exact number of districts proportionally to each of the many races we have in this state's percentage of the population. That is pure racial politics, and I urge you once more, let's get beyond it. The law backs this map, the facts back this map, any opposition to it is simply yelling louder, thumping the table louder, trying to gain partisan advantage. That's not what we're here for. This map retains the exact same partisan split that we had elected in 2021. It does not seek partisan advantage, complies with the law, and it's fair to all Georgians. I urge your support of this bill as we finally get to a vote here later today. Thank you, I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. And I want to take this time to thank the minority leader and the majority leader for once again working with our office and in getting a line of speakers for today's debate. I assured the minority party that I'd let the Senator from the 22nd close debate, and now the majority party, I'll allow the Senator from the 18th to close debate here.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, good afternoon, colleagues, we're just into the afternoon. And here we are, concluding the very, very important work that we all gathered here some five days ago, five business days ago. We're here, as has been said by both sides and everyone, we're here because of a judge's order. Two years ago, we worked really hard to come up with the maps that we proposed and that were voted on, but there was litigation that ensued, and a judge's order has directed us to take action, and that's exactly what we've done. As y'all know, I know just a little something about the process from having done it two years ago and having had the honor of chairing our redistricting reimportionment committee. Want to thank the Senator from the 49th for absolute wonderful job done, who has worked tirelessly in a truncated timeframe about something she probably came, as she got elected, didn't think that was going to be an area of her expertise, but she has developed an expertise in it, and I thank her, and she's brought that in an extremely fair hand and an even-handed process as she managed her committee and managed the process that we all walked down this road together that brought us here together last Wednesday. Congressional maps are notoriously difficult, because you have to ensure that there is zero population deviation. Unlike, as y'all remember, last year or two years ago, and also what we experienced this time, the senate maps can be within a certain degree, and we, as we heard from the Senator from the 50th, the objective was to have a population deviation of no more than 1%. We've done that. But it's a lot more difficult with the congressional, because it literally has to be to the person. Each of our congressional districts have to be the exact same number unless the math works out where it can be one and has to be one off, but in essence, it has to be equal. And that's why Gina Wright, and I want to thank Gina Wright for all of her work and her patience and her tireless effort to work with her patience and her tireless effort to work with everyone across this Capitol to make sure that we had access to her expertise, to the map drawing technology that we have to enable us to do what we've done. And she also brings with the experience that she has, the ability to balance the communities, that's one of the things that we need to do, to maintain and address the issue of voter-anonymity issues if you have a split county or precinct incorrectly, and then also the knowledge of Georgia geography that she has for this state, for our beloved state, is simply unparalleled. Senator from the 49th explained to all of us how this map was arrived at through a negotiated solution between the House and the Senate. Not everybody got what they wanted. I suspect when we all go home, we're going to hear from various folks, maybe some of our congresspeople, that tell us they're not crazy about this map. But it is, with this process and the map that you have, an excellent example of how Georgia has come together to work to fairly represent the people of Georgia. For example, drawing the new Sixth District, we were instructed to do that, and that impacted the surrounding districts, and that's not a surprise. If you in the process two years ago or while we've been here this special session have spent any time with Ms. Wright in her office, and you look at what happens when you change one map, the ripple effect is astounding, and what you have to do to manage and balance and rebalance, it's quite a challenge. And with what had to be done with the Sixth District, it pushed existing districts east. Those naturally moved up into Gwinnett County and also created pressure on the Seventh District, on the northern end. But this map maintains the partisan balance that this legislature endorsed and voted on two years ago, while at the same time fully complying with Judge Jones's order. And we know that the Voting Rights Act does not protect Democratic or Republican officials or Democratic or Republican principles. It protects voters. It's not about us, it's about the people we get elected by and come here to represent. Judge Jones has told us how to comply, and we have done that, and that's what you see in the order that you have to vote on. Even with a compressed timeframe and the map that was made public before any Democratic proposals and was the subject of public comment and questions, this map is a fair map for the people of Georgia and fully complies with the order that we have all heard about, all 516 pages so many times, while meeting the goals of representing everyone. Now, it's been very interesting to listen to the comments of the opposition this morning to talk about the other maps. But let's be clear, in case, for those of you that did not participate or were not on the redistricting and reimportionment committee or chose not to attend those committee hearings, the committee only had one map to consider, one map, and that's the one map you have before you today. So as we stand here ready to vote on this map, it is the only map that's been presented to any decision-makers along the entire walk and process over the last five days and time that we've spent here. It's the only one that anyone has seen, and it's the only one we have to vote on. Now, let me ask you this. What would be the only reason that the Democrats or the minority party would not have offered a map? There's only one logical reason, so let's say what it is. It's because that the Democrats couldn't come up with a map that they knew was better than this one and complied with the judge's order. That's the only logical reason not to do it. Because the map you have here is a good map, it's a fair map, it complies with the judge's order, and I think that's very telling. But instead of offer a map, here we are at the end of this process, we've all come here to do the work for the people, consistent with Judge Jones's order, as he has told us, and rather than provide a map, what we have is, the opposing party instead has chose to, number one, criticize, number two, offer nothing, and number three, impute an ill-will to the process that we engaged in and the map that you have before you that is not what Judge Jones said and specifically was rejected by Judge Jones. We've heard for the last five days of all the ill-will and reasons why the map is before you is because somehow it's motivated by racial prejudice and a desire to harm on a racial level. But I want to tell you what Judge Jones said. We've all enjoyed quoting the judge's order, but nobody on the other side seems to want to talk about this one. Page 230 of the judge's order. "Section 2 of the VRA does not require that the court define that the General Assembly passed the challenged maps to discriminate against black voters or that the General Assembly is racist in any way. Nothing," I repeat, "nothing in this order should be construed to indicate otherwise." Judge Jones found it so important to send that message in this order that that same verbiage is repeated twice in his order. So, as I close, I want to thank everyone for the time that they have spent reviewing what will now ultimately be three maps that we will have voted on, and I appreciate the deliberative nature that this body always characterizes. Obviously, we don't all agree, and sometimes don't even agree on what facts are relevant. But what's beyond question is, you have one map that was proposed for congressional maps pursuant to the judge's order. That's the map that was voted out of committee, that's the map that's on the floor before you today, and it's the only map we have to choose from. There it is. With that, I urge you to vote for this map. With that, Mr. President, I would yield the well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator from the 44th, you have your opportunity now.
Colleagues, I rise today to discuss the proposed changes to the congressional map. In a 516-page order, Judge Jones ordered that the enacted congressional districts 3, 6, 11, 13, and 14 violated the Voting Rights Act. To remedy the violation of the Voting Rights Act, Judge Jones specifically held that an additional majority-black congressional district be drawn in West Metro Atlanta area. To achieve this result, Republicans claim that they have strictly complied with the court's order and only made changes necessary to comply with the order. Well, their actions don't match their words. The Republican map follows the same gerrymandering tactics as the proposed legislative maps. It cracks and packs black voters in the Atlanta metro area to the disadvantage of black voters and in violation of the Voting Rights Act. And the Republican proposals appears to target a black incumbent yet again who represents a district that was not identified by the court as violating the Voting Rights Act. Congressional District Seven is currently represented by Lucy Macbeth. Lucy Macbeth entered the political scene after a personal tragedy, after her 17-year-old son, Jordan Davis, was shot and killed. At that time, our hearts ached for her because of the circumstances surrounding his death. As Judge Jones noted in his order on page 255, Congresswoman Macbeth first defeated Karen Handel in the 2018 Congressional District Six election in a district that had a white-voting-age population of 58.11%. Her election was historic, and she has worked hard in that district to represent her constituents. And then in 2021, redistricting session, the district represented by Macbeth was significantly altered by Republican state legislators. Now again, the district represented by Macbeth is being significantly altered. Under this proposal, Congressional District Seven goes from 67% minority-voting-age population to 33% minority-voting-age population. Additionally, Representative Macbeth is now paired with another incumbent representative. This is not right, and the changes to District Seven were unnecessary. Senators, it's not right. Look at it. The Voting Rights Act was created to protect black voters and to allow them to elect representatives if they so choose to look like them and represent their voices because of things like this, because they are worried that their rights will be taken away or ignored. The Voting Rights Act was created after years of protests and marching by black voters and black people to have their rights, voting rights, respected. I'm so glad that we still use the slogan, "Hands that once picked cotton can now pick Presidents of the United States of America and other elected officials." This Republican map as drawn does not protect black voters, and it targets black representatives. This is disappointing because I would hope that each person in here, in this chamber, wants to protect the voting rights of black Georgians. It is time for this body to do the right thing. I ask you to vote down this map. I yield the well. I'm sorry. Mr. President, thank you very much. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, we're at the posture now. The Senator from 22nd, who's going to deliver the minority report, the minority report is duly noted, and he has said that his time in the well was sufficient enough. We now are at the point where, is there objection for the previous question being ordered? Chair here is none. Previous question is ordered. Would the Senator from the 49th like to close? Okay, she's waived that. The question is on the adoption of the committee substitute. Is there adoption to the committee substitute? Hearing none, the committee substitute is adopted. Is there objection to agreements with the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? Chair here is none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? Chair here is none, the main question is ordered. Question is on the passage of the bill by substitute. All those in favor of the bill will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machine. This bill, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore passed by substitute. All right, we've just got one more thing to do here before we build adjourn here today. So, Secretary Reed, H.R. 3EX.
House Resolution 3EX by Representative Gamble of the 15th and others, a resolution ratifying Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order numbers 09.12.23.01, 10.06.23.01, and 11.08.23.01, suspending the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Finance recommends that this resolution do pass. Respectfully submitted, Senator Huffstetter, 52nd District Chairman. Mr. President, I complete the order.
Recognize the floor leader from the 50th.
Today I bring you House Resolution 3EX on behalf of Governor Kemp to ratify the governor's temporary suspension of the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes in response to his three executive orders declaring a state of emergency for inflation. As hard-working Georgians and their families continue to weather a 40-year high inflation and continue to face uncertain economic headwinds, the governor's actions delivered direct and real relief to Georgians at the pump and to their family's budget. It's roughly saved Georgians approximately $200 million a month. And why we have to ratify that now, it's obviously necessary under the official code of Georgia, and this is a good bill for your people back home. It's a huge tax cut, tax relief, and is helping Georgians throughout the state of Georgia deal with inflation. And with that, Mr. President, I ask for a favorable consideration, and we'll yield for any questions.
There are no questions, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Does any other senator wish to speak for or against a measure? Chair here is none. Is there objection to the previous question being ordered? Chair here is none, the previous question is ordered. Is there objection to agreements with the report of the committee which is favorable to adoption of the resolution? Chair here is none, and the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? Chair here is none, the main question is ordered. The question is on the adoption of the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution will vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machine.
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that in Houston County, the gas tax was suspended as well?
I actually didn't hear the question, Senator, so I'm going to agree with what you said.
I'm sorry, isn't it? In Houston County, the gas tax was suspended as well?
Oh, absolutely. According to the 20th, it's going to go again here pretty soon, so. I mean, you didn't sound like you had a southern accent when you said Houston County like that, Senator. On the adoption of the resolution, the yays are 52, the nays are 2. This resolution, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore adopted. Recognize the majority leader for motion.
Yes, sir. I've moved that the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, December the 6th.
The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, the 6th. All those in favor of the motion will say yea. All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes clearly have it. We adjourn.